Form.
Counselor Baker.
Here.
Counselor Campbell.
Here.
Counselor C. Omo.
Present.
Counselor Edwards.
Counselor Asabi George.
Present.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yeah.
Counselor Flynn.
Yeah.
Counselor Janey.
Present.
Counselor McCarthy.
Here.
Counselor O'Malley.
Present.
Counselor Presley. Counselor Wu. And Counselor Zachem. Madam President, we have a quorum.
Thank you. I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present at this time. Would all my colleagues and guests please rise? Our lovely clerk is going to take us through an invocation. And I ask that all guests remain standing after the invocation as she leads us through the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Madam President. Blessed are the just, for they have the reward in indestructible integrity. Blessed are they who labor in the vineyards of the public realm, for they shall be remembered. Blessed are they who love their nation enough to praise its strengths and criticize its weaknesses, for they shall be made wise. Blessed are public officials who are responsive to the needs of these, the least of the people, for they shall be deputies of the community. Blessed are they who serve the public good, for their reward is in being used. Blessed are the powerful who acknowledge their power, both as gift and responsibility, for they know the binding obligations of their bounty. Blessed are they who rebuke narrow self-interest to sustain the common will, for they are the patriots the nation needs. Blessed are they who rise above partisan loyalties, for they shall administer a public trust. And blessed are all people who seek justice in an imperfect world, for they shall be welcomed into the beloved community. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, I'd like to invite up Counselor Asabi George, who has a special presentation.
Thank you, Madam President. Hunger and homelessness is so prevalent in American society that the issues are highlighted in a national week of awareness, and that is important. Today's presentation is to emphasize the importance of extending beyond just the nationally recognized week, and especially during the often difficult holiday season, to remind everyone that hunger and homelessness are problems that the entire country faces on a daily basis. And many of our families here in Boston are experiencing this as well. 1,031, 871 Bostonians, or 21 percent of the population, live below the poverty level. 6,135 people are homeless in Boston on a typical night. Forty-two million Americans are at risk of suffering from hunger. One in five children in the U.S. live in poverty. No one should have to worry about whether or not they will have food on their plate or a roof over their head. But the reality is that hunger and homelessness are widespread problems that affect far too many people in the city of Boston. As Chair of the Committee on Homelessness, Mental Health, and Recovery, it is so important to me that we continue to support those making strides towards ending homelessness and hunger. In this season of giving thanks, I would also like to take a moment to thank and recognize the many people who dedicate their lives to anti-poverty, to housing, to homelessness, and hunger organizations, including the staff from family, individual, substance abuse, domestic violence, and youth shelters across the city, who are on the front lines helping those experiencing homelessness. The staff from anti-hunger and poverty agencies who strive to ensure food access and security for families and individuals. And most importantly, to the individuals and families bravely facing and working to overcome hunger, homelessness, and housing instability. Today, I'm honored to welcome Homes for Families, specifically their consumer advocacy team, and recognize their leadership in raising awareness about hunger and homelessness in Massachusetts, as well as their advocacy in ensuring the city of Boston recognizes National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, even if it meant waiting until afterward. I would also like to share, a few weeks ago, we held a lunch and chat, I forget what it was called, Lunch and Learn? And we talked about hunger, we talked about homelessness. And we talked about how oftentimes our families that are, families in particular, when they're experiencing homelessness, we find them housing, we get them into a unit, and we celebrate that. But those that support them in stabilizing that housing will go for visits, whether they're social workers or caseworkers, and realize that there's very little in the fridge, often what they left the shelter with originally. So we have created the housing opportunity, but we need to also realize that we need to make sure that the hunger piece is also taken care of. And I would admit that as much as we've worked on, and I've worked on through my committee, the concern and the work around homelessness, we often forget the discussion about hunger. And so we thought it was important that although we had this one week of awareness, that it really should be a month-long celebration or awareness celebration in a good way when we talk about this out loud, but it really should be a year-long effort, not just around Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays. It should be something that we recognize is a problem 12 months a year and a challenge for so many of our residents across the city of Boston. So today, we have a resolution on behalf of the Boston City Council to recognize National Hunger and Homeless Awareness Week. Again, we need to change that to year. And we do that with Libby Hayes, who's been a real advocate and mentor for me as I learned this work. And she's always bringing the right people to teach me and to teach all of us about the work that we need to be doing as policymakers to support the work that they're doing on the front lines. I know in addition to who's here on the podium, there are so many of you in the room that have come today to recognize this day, to help us all bring greater awareness to this day, and I appreciate your presence. I certainly appreciate everyone's full-hearted and full-bellied thoughts about this issue, and hope that you'll consider it not just during these holiday months, but all year round. Libby, I don't know if you want to share something before the council briefly, and putting you on the spot right now.
Just want to recognize everyone in the room that's here supporting this, and thank you to the counselor and the full body for the awareness. I think when we meet with families and talk to families and residents of Boston and see families being displaced from every single neighborhood, families that are hungry in every single neighborhood, and just feel it's critical that we do better and do more so that the, to end the suffering and to take care of all members of our community.
Thank you, Libby. Applause.
So here's your resolution, and we're going to do a photo that's going to get shared at least 13-fold across the city of Boston.
Thank you, Counselor Asabi George. And at this time, Counselor Janey has a special presentation.
Thank you, Madam President. And it's very fitting that this presentation come right on the heels of the previous presentation for Homes for Families. I'd like to invite up Catherine and Michelle from Community Works to receive this. So as they make their way, I'm very honored and pleased to be able to recognize Community Works for the fantastic work that they do. This is a 17-member organization. It includes the Hawthorne Youth and Community Center, which Michelle is a board member of, and Catherine Joseph here with me is the Executive Director for Community Works. They do amazing work focused on a range of issues, including youth empowerment, public health, environmental justice, racial equity, and workers' rights. Their impact is both local and global. It is a cooperative that seeks to raise money. They've raised millions of dollars for the member organizations, and this is nonprofit work, so it's so important. And that's since 1982. It's very fitting and important that we recognize folks in our community who are making the city of Boston a better place for our young people, for our seniors, for adults, for families, whenever we can. And so it's a great honor to have you here today, and I'd like to invite you each to say a few words if you'd like. And I do have a resolution for you and your good work, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Yes. Hi, I'm Catherine. I represent Community Works. We are a cooperative nonprofit made up of 17-member organizations throughout Greater Boston, all of whom are doing social justice work in their home communities. It is quite fitting that we come after Homes for Families, whom I know very well, but a lot of the issues that they work on, we also intersect with. And so, I mean, it's wonderful. We also do affordable housing, immigrant rights, not to say that you don't, but sexual assault and domestic violence issues, sort of all of the cutting-edge social justice issues that cut across the gamut of, you know, social justice issues. We raise money primarily by going into workplaces and soliciting their employees to participate in a payroll deduction program. The monies that employees give to Community Works are collected to us and then redistributed to all of the 17-member organizations within our cooperative. One of the things that we like to say is that, you know, building community is not just a tagline for us. It's something that we do every day. We're on the front lines doing the work. You know, we keep women, men, and children safe. We keep families together. We connect community members to resources. We work with a self-determining population to help them solve community issues. Some of the members come from the very neighborhoods that have these issues. They were born and raised, and so they know the issue at a grassroots level, and they know who to go to and what people to connect so that social justice work can be carried on and we can advance our work. One of the reasons why we wanted to be here at the City Council is because we want to solicit City of Boston employees for a payroll deduction campaign. We have been involved with City of Boston for many years, but I think with the change of administration, things have gotten lost, you know? So we're trying to re-raise the campaign. But we also want the City Councils to know that we would, at some point, like to reach out to you, to see if there's any businesses that you know who may be interested in the work of community that we do. So we are based in, mostly in Greater Boston, but we also have organizations in Somerville and in Waltham, and some in Quincy.
Thank you. Did you want to say a few words, Michelle?
Let me just say, my name is Michelle Rayner. Let me say something on behalf of Hawthorne. As Catherine says, we build and bridge community through education, cultural, and recreational opportunities, and we serve as a center at Hawthorne for dialogue about the community. As I walked in here, I saw a young man up in the gallery who had been one of our Hawthorne kids and now is working on homeless issues. So it's just that we try to give our students that solid grounding so that they can be better citizens in the community. We've been doing this work for over 46 years. We invite you to come and visit us. We have a program where we do some community meals in the summer, so we invite you to join our students as they grow it, cook it, and share it. So we do appreciate the opportunity to come here today.
Thank you. And I want to invite my colleagues up for a photo you can take with the resolution.
How are you?
I'm well. I'm well.
Thank you. Do you want to cook the apple?
No.
Thank you, Counselor Janey. So we're going to move on to the regular order of business, starting with the approval of the minutes. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of the last council meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing no objection, the minutes are so approved. Moving on to communications from His Honor, the Mayor.
Madam President, would you like me to read 1656 through 1661?
That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Docket number 1656, message and order approving a supplemental appropriation of $18,212,630 to cover the FY19 cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Boston and the International Association of Firefighters Local 718. The terms of the contract are July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018, and July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2021. The major provisions of the contract include base wages increases of 2% effective the first pay period of July of each fiscal year. The agreements also include increases to night differential, hazardous duty compensation, EMT specialist pay, and modified wellness differential. Filed in the office of the City Clerk on November 26, 2018. Docket number 1657, message and order to reduce the FY19 appropriation for the Reserve for Collective Bargaining by $18,212,630 to provide funding for the Boston Fire Department for the FY19 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Boston and the International Association of Firefighters Local 718. Docket number 1658, message and order approving a supplemental appropriation of $1,013,755 to cover the FY19 cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the Boston School Committee SEIU Local 888 Administrative Guild. The terms of the contract are September 1, 2016 through August 31, 2017, and September 1, 2017 through August 31, 2020. The major provisions of the contract include base wage increases of 2% in September of each fiscal year. The agreements also contain other benefits, including new steps. Filed in the office of the City Clerk on November 26, 2018. Docket number 1659, message and order to reduce the FY19 appropriation for the Reserve for Collective Bargaining by $1,013,755 to provide funding for the Boston Public Schools for the FY19 costs contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the Boston School Committee and the SEIU Local 888 Administrative Guild. Docket number 1660, message and order approving a supplemental appropriation for the Boston Public Health Commission and the city's housing trust for FY19 in the amount of $280,229 to cover the FY19 cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the Boston Public Health Commission and Local 888 SEIU Programs Unit. The terms of the contract are October 1, 2016 through September 30, 2017, and October 1, 2017 through September 30, 2020. The major provisions of the contract include base wage increases of 2% effective the first pay period of January of each fiscal year. The agreements also contain other benefits, including a new step beginning in 2019 filed in the office of the City Clerk on November 26, 2018. And docket number 1661, message and order to reduce the appropriation for the Reserve for Collective Bargaining by $280,229 to provide funding for the Boston Public Health Commission and the city housing trust for the FY19 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the Boston Public Health Commission and Local 888 SEIU Programs Unit.
Docket 1656 through 1661 will be placed in the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 1662, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept an amount of $14 million in the form of a grant for the continued support of unique planning, exercises, training, and operational needs that will assist in building enhanced and sustainable security capacity to help prevent, respond to, and recover from threats or acts of terrorism, including chemical, biological, radiological, nuclear, and explosive incidents. Awarded by the United States Department of Homeland Security, passed through the Mass. Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, to be administered by the mayor's office of Homeland Security, the grant will fund urban area security initiatives for FFY18.
Docket 1662 will be assigned to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Madam President, would you like me to read 1663 and 1664 together?
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Docket number 1663, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expand an amount of $1,809,800 in the form of Title III-C Nutrition Program for the FFY2019, awarded by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Mass. Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the Elderly Commission. The grant will fund the home-delivered and congregate meals for seniors in Boston. And docket number 1664, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expand an amount of $1,363,864.32 in the form of a grant for the State Elder Lunch Program, awarded by the Mass. Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the Elderly Commission. The grant will fund meals for seniors in Boston.
Docket 1663 and 1664 will be assigned to the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Community.
Docket number 1665, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expand an amount of $500,000 in the form of a grant from the Planning for the Economic Mobility Lab, awarded by the Rockefeller Foundation, to be administered by the mayor's office. The grant will fund the costs of researching and planning an economic mobility lab to advance economic mobility and security for lower and lower-income, middle-class Bostonians.
Docket 1665 will be assigned to the Committee on Jobs, Wages, and Workforce Development.
And Madam President, would you like me to do 1666 and 1667 together?
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Docket number 1666, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expand an amount of $493,379 in the form of a grant for the Title III-E Caregivers, bless you, awarded by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Mass. Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the Elderly Commission. The grant will fund sub-grants for caregiver services to seniors and grandparents raising their grandchildren. Docket number 1667, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expand the amount of $300,000 in the form of a grant from Boston's Children's Hospital, to be administered by the Office of Food Access. The grant would fund the Boston Eat Program, improve the health and well-being of children and families disproportionately impacted by inequities in health and in social detriment of health.
Docket 1666 through 1667 will be assigned to the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities.
Docket number 1668, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expand an amount of $275,000 in the form of a grant for the CESE Program, awarded by the donor group, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund the city's Empowered Against Sexual Exploitation Network in Boston, a multi-sector strategy among law enforcement, businesses, the faith community, legislators, and survivors who are working in partnership to abolish and demand, and the demand for human trafficking.
Docket 1668 will be assigned to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Docket number 1669, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expand an amount of $66,175 in the form of a grant of the FFY18 Emergency Management Performance Grant, awarded by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, passed through the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, to be administered by the mayor's office of emergency management. The grant will fund the increased ability to effectively provide prompt and accurate public information and alerts. It will also enhance capacity across the Commonwealth to recover from acts of terrorism, as well as natural technological or international hazards.
Counselor McCarthy, of the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I rise to suspend and, accept and suspend 1669. It's pretty straightforward, as this fund will increase the ability to get out the alerts in case of disaster. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor McCarthy. Counselor McCarthy, who's the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1669. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1669 has been passed.
Docket number 1670, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expand an amount of $50,000 in the form of a grant for Smart Utilities Policy, awarded by the Barr Foundation, to be administered by the Environment Department. The grant would fund district energy microgrid engineering expertise for implementation of Boston's Smart Utilities Policy.
Counselor O'Malley, of the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to ask to suspend and pass docket number 1670. This is a $50,000 grant from the Smart Utilities Policy awarded by the Barr Foundation. Essentially, what it will do, we've had a change in our Article 80 process, that projects that are larger than 1.5 million square feet will now be responsible for conducting a feasibility study as it relates to microgrids. This is very, very, very good news, and I hope it's the first step. I hope we're able to lower that number, to have it more. But microgrids are this theory that more and more cities are doing to combat our reliance on fossil fuels, to create literally hyper-local smart grid technologies that will be able to offset, as I said, reliance on sort of traditional fossil fuels. So this is to help address with feasibility on many of these programs. It's a $50,000 grant, which will help get some of these off the ground. So rather than having a hearing, I think that we need to free up this money and get to work as quickly as humanly possible. So I ask for suspension and passage of this docket.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. At this time, Counselor O'Malley, the Chair of the Committee on Environment, Sustainability, and Parks, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1670. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1670 has been passed.
Docket 1671, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expand an amount of $15,000 in the form of a grant for the Strategic Planning Initiative, awarded by Share Our Strength, to be administered by the Office of Food Access. The grant will fund support to the Office of Food's Strategic Planning Initiative to hire a consultant and materials.
Counselor O'Malley, of the floor.
Thank you again, Madam President. Thank you again, Madam President. As the vice chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, I move to suspend the rules and pass docket 1671. As the clerk just read, this grant will fund personnel and resources for the Office of Food Strategic Planning Initiative in the mayor's office of food access. This office plays a major role in ensuring we have healthy food options in stores and farmers markets in targeted neighborhoods. If we aim to build healthier families and communities, we need to be more inclusive in where people can have purchasing power, especially for those who do not always have access to fresh and healthy foods. As vice chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, I move today to suspend the rules. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, who's the vice chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1671. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, docket 1671 has been passed.
Docket number 1672, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expand an amount of $10,000 in the form of a grant for the FY18 National Violent Death Reporting System, awarded by the Mass. Department of Public Health, to be administered by the Boston Police Department. The grant will fund data collection by the Bureau of Investigative Services and the Drug Control Unit.
Counsel McCarthy of the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I move to suspend and pass 1672. Again, a $10,000 grant, very straightforward. This whole, this grant will go towards fund, fund the data collection for the BRIC and Drug Control Unit for the Boston Police Department.
Thank you, Counsel McCarthy. Counsel McCarthy, who's the chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1672. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, docket 1672 has been passed.
Docket number 1673, message in order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Catherine Codaridis to the Board of Directors of the Industrial Development Finance Authority for term expiring April 1st, 2023.
A docket 1673 will be assigned to the committee on planning, development, and Madam Clerk, if you could read docket 1674 through 1675 together?
Thank you. Docket number 1674, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Catherine Judge as a member of the Audit Committee in the city of Boston for a term expiring November 1st, 2023. And docket number 1675, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Matthew Gosiewicz as a member of the Audit Committee for the city of Boston for a term expiring on November 1st, 2023.
Counsel Siomo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Normally, I would have this hearing, but they need a quorum for the last meeting of the year. I sent along the resumes for everybody's review. I think they're impeccable, myself. We can certainly have the Audit Committee in after the new year. In addition to that, there's very little room to hold hearings in this chamber over the next several days to get business done. So I'm begging your indulgence for passage of these two dockets. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Siomo. Counselor Siomo, who's chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of these appointments, a confirmation of these appointments, which is dockets 1674 and 1675. We'll take them separately. For dockets 16, for docket 1674, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, docket 1674 has been passed. And for docket 1675, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, docket 1675 has been passed.
Madam President, would you like me to read docket 1676 and 1677 together?
That would be great, thank you.
Thank you. Docket number 1676, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Sammy Nebulsi to the Board of Directors of the Boston Industrial Development Finance Authority for a term expiring April 1st, 2022. And docket number 1677, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Gerardo Espenzo Espenzoa to the Board of Directors to the Boston Industrial Development Finance Authority for a term expiring April 1st, 2021.
Docettes 1676 and 1677 will be assigned to the committee on planning, development, and transportation. Moving on to reports of public officers and others. Madam Clerk, if we could read docket 1678 through 1681 together?
Thank you. Docket number 1678, communication was received from Brian P. Golden, Director of the Boston Planning and Development Agency, regarding the proposed eminent domain taking of city of Boston-owned property on Broadway and Marginal Road. Docket number 1679, communication was received from the city clerk of the filing by the Boston Redevelopment Authority of the agreement between the city of Boston and Old Colony Phase A4 Limited Partnership pursuant to Chapter 121A, Section 6A of the Massachusetts General Laws. Docket number 1680, communication was received from the city clerk of the filing of the Boston Redevelopment Authority of the agreement between the city of Boston and Old Colony Phase 3A9 Limited Partnership pursuant to Chapter 121A, Section 6A of the Massachusetts General Laws. And docket number 1681, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Darlene Lombos as a member of the Boston School Committee Nominating Panel for term expiring November 1st, 2020.
Docettes 1678 through 1681 will be placed on file.
Docket number 1682, the constable bond of Lamar Capehart, having been duly approved by the collective treasurer, was received and approved.
The chair seeks approval of docket 1682 under the usual terms and conditions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, docket 16, docket 1682 has been approved under the usual terms and conditions. Madam Clerk, if we could read docket number 1683 through 1687 together?
Thank you. Docket 1683, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor and papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of October 17, 2018. Docket number 1684, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor acted upon by the city council at its meeting of October 31, 2018. Docket number 1685, communication was received from the city clerk of the filing by the Boston Redevelopment Authority of the Second Amendment to the Report and Decision on the Victoria Apartments Chapter 121A Project. Docket number 1686, the communication was received from the city clerk of the filing by the Boston Redevelopment Authority of the First Amendment to the Report and Decision of the Apostles 1B and 1C Chapter 121A Project. And docket number 1687, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of David Elges as the Chief Information Officer, effective November 26, 2018.
Docettes 1683 through 1687 will be placed on file. Matters recently heard for possible action.
Madam President, would you like me to read 1621 through 1614 together?
Yes, that'd be great, thank you.
Thank you. Docket 1621, order that pursuant to Chapter 40, Section 56, residential factor in the city of Boston for FY 2019 shall be the minimum residential factor as determined by the Commissioner of Revenue pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 58, Section 1A, and be further that pursuant to Chapter 59, Section 5C, as amended, a residential exemption in the amount of value equal to 35% of the average assessed value of all Class 1 residential apostles in the city of Boston be and hereby is approved for fiscal year 2019. Docket number 1612, message in order for your approval of an order authorizing the city of Boston to appropriate $6,500,000 from the city's capital grant fund to address the impact of transportation network services on municipal roads, bridges, and other transportation infrastructure, or any other public purpose substantially related to the operation of transportation network services in the city. And docket number 1614, message in order for your approval, a declaration of trust entitled "The Make Boston Shine Trust Fund." This trust fund will further promote the public health, safety, inconvenience, and welfare by encouraging civic engagement, unity, and a sense of neighborhood pride and ownership by supporting residents and community groups and service projects to beautify.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. For a call on Counselor Siomo, can we amend the attendance record to reflect that Counselor Edwards is present?
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Counselor Siomo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Ways and Means held these three hearing orders on Monday, November Docket 1621 is an order for the city council to adopt classification and declare a residential exemption in the city of Boston for fiscal year 2019. This is an annual requirement for us to get certified by the state. The order will implement the minimum residential factor and residential exemption of 35%. Determinations that must be made by the council and approved by the mayor prior to certification of the city's tax rate. Assessing Commissioner Gail Willett testified at this hearing explaining the two local options and the city's history of opting for the highest savings for resident taxpayers, a combined average of $4,500 for each qualifying homeowner last year. Public testimony was taken from Sam Tyler, president of Boston Municipal Research Bureau, who expressed concerns about the increased tax burden that classification places on the business community, but also understood that there was no chance we were going to actually do that. The city relies heavily on property tax, the city funds, but has always placed importance on providing maximum relief to residential taxpayers. Docket 1612 is an order authorizing appropriation of 6.5 million from the city's capital grant fund to address the impact of transportation network companies, known as TNCs, such as Uber and Lyft, on municipal infrastructure and other projects related to their impact and mitigation of it. The funds of the city's portion of per-ride assessments paid by the TNCs to the state this year and last, which was the first year of the program, and are earmarked by state law for transportation projects. The per-ride assessment is 20 cents, of which the city receives 10 cents for every ride originating in the city of Boston. Budget Director Justin Sterrett and Chief Osgood testified at this hearing explaining the funding source and the city's planned investments. Mr. Sterrett explained that the city will begin using the funding in FY19 and that most of the investments will be one-time capital or limited-term expenses due to the sunset clause in the law. It's a five-year sunset clause. Chief Osgood listed the planned investments for the appropriation, including sidewalk repair, bike infrastructure, improvement of roadway markings, construction of temporary plazas, and grant-funded positions. These investments will help make city streets safer and more reliable while planning for the lasting impact of TNCs on our transportation, traffic, and infrastructure. Finally, docket 1614 establishes the Make Boston Shine Trust Fund, which will be used to fundraise and award small grants to residents and community groups involved in service projects to beautify Boston and keep neighborhoods clean. Chief of Civic Engagement Jerome Smith and Senior Deputy Treasurer Drew Smith testified at this hearing. Treasurer Smith testified about the structure of the trust, which will be comprised of five mayoral-appointed trustees, with the collective treasurer serving as trust manager of investments, tax filings, and distributions. The trust will not be an endowment, but rather is simply a transparent vehicle for fundraising and distribution, and is anticipated to stay under $100,000. Chief Smith explained that the trust continues the work of the Love Your Block program, but allows for additional flexibility and a broader range of projects. The trust will make fundraising and awarding grants for community projects simple, flexible, and transparent, allowing residents to be supported and engaged in efforts to clean and beautify their neighborhoods. I recommend passage of all three dockets.
Thank you, Counsel Siomo. At this time, Counselor Siomo, who's the chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, recommends acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1621, 1612, and 1614. We'll take them each separately. All those in favor of passage of docket 1621 say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Counselor Sabi George. Those who oppose say nay. The ayes have it, docket 1621 has been passed. All those in favor of passage of docket 1612 say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, docket 1612 has been passed. And all those in favor of passage of docket 1614 say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, docket 1614 has been passed.
Docket number 0265, order for hearing regarding vocational education in the city of Boston.
Counselor Sabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This passed Monday evening. I chaired a four-hour and 15-minute hearing on docket number 0265 regarding vocational education in the city of Boston. Thank you to Counselor Wu and Counselor Janey for your partnership in this work. I'd also like to thank all of my colleagues who attended and for their engagement, interest, and questions on this issue. I started off the hearing by giving a presentation on the work done to date. This included information about the scope of vocational education in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I also spoke about what we learned from visiting other vocational technical schools. During the hearing, we heard from Madison Park Vocational Technical High School Community, including its executive director Kevin McCaskill, Ms. Brett Dickens, the interim headmaster, Greg Mumford, deputy director of Youth Build Boston, a partner at Madison Park, Ms. Judith Baker from the Friends of Madison Park, and two students, Jose and Melanie. When we talk about improving our schools, it's always important to hear directly from our students. I was pleased to hear the phenomenal opportunities Melanie, a cosmetology student, and Jose, a radio and television broadcasting student, have had because of Madison Park. Both spoke so highly about their school experience. Melanie and Jose also spoke about the stigma often associated with Madison Park. Melanie spoke about the shame she felt when she was talking to friends about where she attended high school. Jose spoke about how he intended to go to a different high school initially, but his guidance counselor encouraged him to attend Madison. Both have pride in attending their school and do not regret their decisions. We have to ensure that negative perceptions are not getting in the way of prospective students' education. We have to shine a light on the amazing opportunities Jose, Melanie, and all the other students at Madison Vocational Technical High School have been granted. We were also joined by the Boston Chamber of Commerce, the Private Industry Council, including the career specialist who was at Madison Park, college partners such as Roxbury Community College, Wentworth Institute of Technology, and Ben Franklin Institute of Technology. During public testimony, there was a strong feeling of disappointment, especially for those who have witnessed the decline that Madison has gone through over the years. However, there was one word that was repeated and shared throughout the hearing Monday night: hope. I have hope too, hope for change. During opening statements from the other counselors and during public testimony, we heard concern that there's been a lot of talk about improving Madison, but no action. From the outside looking in, I understand this perception. However, improving the quality and resources at a school doesn't happen overnight. This is why we, myself, especially myself, Counsel Janey, and Counselor Wu, as all of you have shown interest, we've toured taught performing vocational technical high schools around the Commonwealth. In order for the change, we have to understand what we are aiming for. Through our field work, our policy briefing in September, and this hearing on Monday evening, we now know what we should be, what we should be modeling our vocational education off of. This work doesn't stop here. It is just the beginning. Tonight, I will be attending a school committee meeting to testify about the importance of investing and building capacity at Madison. I will also share some of our recommendations from Monday evening: improving the budget process as it relates to Chapter 74 funding, prioritizing the campus for a Build BPS investment, creating a real plan for partnership, creating a real admissions and application process, completing a program analysis in partnership with industry leaders, and considering the implementation of a 2012 Innovation School Plan. This budget season, for fiscal year 20, I'll be advocating for additional funding for Madison Park. This will have to be a team effort. I will also be working to leverage student voices like Jose and Melanie, so other middle school students understand the window of opportunity Madison Park offers. I will also be pushing for better partnerships with industry leaders to expand curriculum and offer internships and work experiences to our Madison Park students. I thank all of you who attended the other night. I think we had almost the full council. I do ask that this, this... I do ask that this order remain in committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Asabi George. Counselor Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to thank the committee chair and our other co-sponsor, Counselor Janey, for a very comprehensive and really informative effort over almost a year now at Madison Park and even beyond Boston, thinking about the potential of vocational education to fill, I think, nearly every need or challenge that we're looking at in the city for our youth and for that next generation. One piece that really stuck out to me, in addition to the need for action and everything that the chairwoman has brought up, was that on all sides, the pieces are there, and there's a fundamental need for lifting up the school and infusing pride into the school, making that public. Meaning that the programs are there, the talented students are there, the hard-working faculty are there, the partners are ready, but we need students and families to be choosing Madison Park in the admissions process. We need more voices calling for the support and following up and volunteering and spending time with the students. And we need more businesses and companies constantly reminded that this should be the first place they go to when they're thinking about opportunities or expansion. So what does that mean for us? We have to see more elected officials, more leaders representing every sector of the community at the school, engaging with the students. So maybe it's into 2019, setting up some more formal opportunities for the whole council to go, or whomever is interested. But there's something you get from just being in the space with the students there, and then you, I think, like my co-sponsors and I, will then be singing the praises of the school in every other meeting that you're going to, which will then continue to generate that buzz and that energy that we need. So I fully support all the recommendations and look forward to adding my name to any of those efforts and into the budget season and advocacy for more funding as well. But just want to put an ask out there that everyone here, everyone watching, think about Madison Park. Remember that this is a huge resource, and there's a lot of great work happening that will only be amplified if we continue talking about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Wu. Counselor Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And I'd like to, at first, thank and appreciate the Chair of Education, Anissa Asabi George, for her leadership, and certainly Counselor Wu for the partnership on this particular hearing order. This was a very long process, which was, I think, important because we learned a lot, you know, from doing tours to really meeting with different stakeholders, including students, parents, teachers, administrators at Madison, doing the policy briefing, very important. I certainly echo everything that they've already said. You know, I remember Madison when it was built. I was still in school at that time. You know, there was a lot of hope placed in that building for the opportunities for young people. And, you know, it's been heartbreaking to see things not really being fulfilled. And it's our young people who we have to keep lifted up as we push forward. I remember someone at the hearing said that it used to be about vocational education, but now it's about jobs of the future, which is so true. I think in the past, many people looked at vocational education as something for kids who are not college-bound, for kids who perhaps don't have the wherewithal to think about college. You know, you're not smart enough to go to college, so you should go ahead and get a trade. But what is very clear is that the academics at Madison are very important to the Madison community, and this is about the future. This is not, you know, technical education. Vocational education isn't just about, you know, learning a trade because you can't go to college, but because these are the jobs of the future. And so making sure that we're doing all we can to promote Madison is so important. Making sure that we're actually investing in Madison in terms of the budget is so important. I think about, you know, the construction, the building trades, and what is happening in the surrounding area, you know, near Madison, and the missed opportunities in terms of really engaging our young people in a substantial way. I'm glad that we have seen some of the building trades really kind of step up to the plate in that regard, to make sure that that partnership is happening, to make sure that those relationships are happening, and that experience for our young people is happening. So I certainly support the committee report from the chair and ask that all of you continue to think about Madison, as Counselor Wu said, and invest in Madison. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Janey. At this time, docket 0265 will be assigned, will remain in the Committee on Education.
Docket number 1543, ordinance regarding fair, work, weak employment standards for the city of Boston.
Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. We held the hearing yesterday, November 27th, on docket 1543, sponsored by our colleague, City Council Michelle Wu. The ordinance requires the city of Boston-covered employees to provide work schedules that are predictable, providing employees with advance notice of work schedules, and requiring that employees are compensated when their employer initiates changes to their schedules that occur after the advance notice period. So we heard from Director Trin Nguyen from the city of Boston's Workforce Development Department telling us who would be covered, who wouldn't be covered, which vendors. The city currently has 389 vendors that would be impacted. We heard testimony from Bob Luss, President and CEO of the Mass Restaurant Association; Ryan Canny was here from the Retailers Association of Mass; Stuart Coleman was here representing the Staffing Association, along with Sam Tyler from the Municipal Research Bureau, all having concerns with this proposal. We also heard from Jeremy Thompson from the Mass Budget and Policy Center, who offered testimony and support, discussing that other cities have passed the fair work, weak laws, and unstable work schedules have negative impacts on individuals' health, school, and quality of life. So a big part of the argument, and it was well-attended by our colleagues, broke down between predictability and flexibility. And so, working through the lead sponsor, pledging to work with the interested parties that showed up yesterday, as well as the administration, to see what, if any, tweaks or amendments could be made to make this sort of a more inclusive piece that satisfies the concerns, really from the staffing and retail and restaurant industry, but also the ones that were outlined by Sam Tyler from the Municipal Research Bureau, just making sure that there's no additional exorbitant cost in terms of monitoring, things like that. But it was well-attended. Like I said, the debate and dialogue was very productive, and I hope is, again, working with the lead sponsor to try to have something turned around for the council in short order. And we'll defer to the lead sponsor through the chair. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm really grateful to all the counselors who attended yesterday, and especially to the committee chair for making time in a very crowded schedule with his committee and with the chamber. I came away from our hearing very excited. I think it's always helpful to have the people who are most concerned right at the table with us and laying it all out. And what I found heartening was that, in fact, I would say 80 to 90% of the concerns that were brought up were not about the city ordinance, but were about the larger anxieties that their trade groups had with statewide legislation passing that would affect every restaurant, every large retailer. The reality is that our city ordinance would do what we jurisdictionally could do, which is think about city employees, as well as the employees of companies directly contracting with the city. The language is written to mirror the living wage ordinance's coverage. Trin said yesterday that was about an additional 3,500 to 4,200 employees that are covered. I have the list in my office of what all those companies would be, and I'll circulate that so people can see. But it doesn't include the restaurants that were talked about. It doesn't include the retailers that the folks on this side of the table were worried about. They were really talking about being afraid that Boston passing something would make it likely that the state would pass something, which I'm always happy to take on, especially with some of our environmental issues. So that was one thing. The other point that I wanted to make is that everyone who had concerns also acknowledged that scheduling predictability was the best practice in the industry. In fact, they said that the vast majority of their members already did this because they needed to keep the best employees. They needed to keep their workforce happy and therefore to keep their profits up. They're already doing this and cite it specifically as a best practice. They're worried about introducing too many barriers to kind of lift up everyone to that standard that would affect the entire industry. But one, I think that's government's role, to make sure we are setting the parameters of what the floors, the minimums should be for particularly those with less leverage and less bargaining power, of what their fair working conditions should be. So I think Counselor Edwards and several others echoed this. Counselor Flynn and Counselor Janey and Jacob stated that city jobs should set the standard. We are already doing it when it comes to fair wages with the living wage ordinance. We are already doing it when it comes to thinking about our procurement and offering opportunities to Boston residents, to businesses owned by women and people of color. We should be adding this very important factor of whether a person can cobble together all of the needed hours, plus their childcare, plus their appointments to the doctor, to make their living situation, their family situation, possible. Taxpayer dollars should only be funding jobs where that is a given. And if a business doesn't want to do that, fine. You know, personally, we could disagree, but policy-wise, they wouldn't be affected by this ordinance in that they're not being forced to bid for the city jobs that would come with that requirement. Only the companies offering the highest standards of working conditions, fair wages, and safety should have access to those city jobs that our taxpayers, our city residents, are funding. So again, thanks to the chair, we're talking about amendments and tightening up the language to address some of the concerns. I do, you know, the composition of the council is changing, and there's a lot happening. I'm holding out hope that there's a pathway if we can focus on really what the ordinance is about and not the statewide can of worms conversation to see action before the end of the year. But I want to be transparent about that, and we'll follow up with the chair about what that could look like. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Wu. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter? At this time, docket 1543, we remain in the Committee on Government Operations. Moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 1688, Councilors Edwards and Wu, offer the following order for hearing regarding student transportation to Boston public schools.
Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I apologize for being tardy today. First, I'd like to suspend the rules and add Counselor Anissa Asabi George.
Suspend Rule 12.
Rule 12, yes.
Madam Clerk, any objections to suspending Rule 12? Madam Clerk, if we could add Counselor Asabi George as a third sponsor. Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. This motion is really the prompt of a conversation that happened due to an in district, unfortunate in district kind of fight, wherein some of my parents are particularly concerned about their children having access to a bus, and other ones feeling on that same very bus that their kids were getting kicked off. And so we were talking and looking at the policies, high school versus middle school, and talking about this, we realized that we, those of us who live in East Boston and Charlestown, especially in the North End, have some unique traffic challenges. And we were wondering, honestly, if BPS and the transportation system and busing is really accounting for that. The challenges include, for example, going to BeLa if you live in East Boston right now, taking two Ts, the blue to the orange, to wait for a bus to take you down to BeLa. And that's a lot for middle school students. That's a lot for high school students. And we're wondering, or I'm particularly wondering and wanting this conversation to be beyond what we had during the budget season, where we specifically talked about the numbers and how much it costs to move kids around. I want to talk about equity and moving kids around at these kinds of hours, and also looking at the different ways in which other neighborhoods have managed to get resources that, at least in my district, I feel that we don't have, how there seems to be combination for some of the exam schools in other neighborhoods that get the kids on MBTA buses, while when we're talking about East Boston and Charlestown, we don't have access to the same thing. This is a conversation to talk about equity and also making sure that as we're moving kids around, we also acknowledge that some exam schools, or maybe the only exam schools, seem to have access to busing, while kids coming into Charlestown High School don't. There's a real concern about how we're moving or allowing kids to move based on where they're going to school and where they live, and that's an equity issue. And there's also a question about how we can solve this together. You know, just looking how much a bus costs, I confirmed it's about $100,000 for a school bus. And I think that there's room for some public-private partnerships in talking about mitigation, specifically in my district. Again, we have the North Washington Street Bridge. We have a massive amount of development in East Boston. We have a tunnel that is consistently and always blocked. And so there are partners to come to this table because unfortunately, they're feeding into the traffic issues. So why we aren't looking at some developers, why we aren't looking at some other forms of mitigation to help, at least temporarily while the traffic is overly burdensome in this district? And I hate to be so district-focused, but honestly, I think when I pull back, we can't afford to just have a district-one conversation, and that's why I invited my colleagues to talk about it at large, or talk about it as a citywide issue, again, beyond just the numbers and beyond the budget time, to really talk about equity, how we're moving our kids around. Are we exercising best practices? And are we getting all the stakeholders to the table to make sure that we're actually getting the resources necessary to make sure that they move? This is the one stress I would think a parent having a BPS should not have to have, and that's how their kid is going to get to school. Within the schools, the quality of the schools, how long the schools are, all of those things, I understand, again, not having kids, but at least I understand, those are questions that may come up on a regular basis, but that you should be able to know your kid is going to be safely delivered to a school shouldn't be on the list for parents to have to deal with. So I'm excited to kick off this conversation. I look forward to having as many ideas and stakeholders at the table. I don't see this as a conversation against BPS so much as are we really doing the best that we can in getting the resources that they need to provide for equity in transportation.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. Counselor Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, and thank you so much to the lead sponsor and Counselor Asabi George. I think it's a powerful combination to have the district represented, where there have been some recent, very stressful situations for families, and then committees representing transportation and education, thinking about it holistically. I just wanted to note that some of the work that had happened over the summer in my office, we had a grad student fellow looking at how students get to school and what the impacts were of transportation on their lives, surveyed almost 300 young people in Boston. That report should be out, we're finishing it this week, and it should be out to dovetail exactly with this, so hope to file that at the next council meeting. The findings just add data to what we all hear across every district and every neighborhood, that transportation, how much it costs, how unreliable the public transit system is, is a major stressor, and particularly for students who are trying not just to get to school, but to after-school programs or to jobs that their families need. It is compounding it when they are not sure what time, if the bus is going to come on time, then they're late to school through no fault of their own, then they get marked tardy, then they have a detention, then they miss that job or after-school program, and it's on and on and on, the impacts. So this is a way bigger issue than just even getting to particular schools from particular parts of the city. It's really about an economic situation that is exacerbated into now multiple generations from our transportation system being unreliable, our public transit system being unreliable, and the city needing to now figure out how to plug those gaps. There's some specific policy recommendations coming out of that report, things like changing the M7 policy, things like advocating for the MBTA for certain changes, so looking forward to looping that all in. The last thing I'll say is that connecting this back to the Madison Park hearing, or the vocational ed hearing we were just talking about, when our fabulous student Jose was asked what was the one thing he would change by next school year about Madison Park to make it better, he said transportation, that it was hard for him to get there on time from where he lives, and I think we'd find that at every school across the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wu. Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Please add my name, and sorry, references if you're unsure. But also in Brighton and High Park and Reedville, seems like the further you are away from, particularly exam schools, these kids are getting up 4:30, quarter to 5:00 in the morning just to try to be able to get to school on time. So we've heard the stories of this could be a more sort of a comprehensive and cohesive way where we could transport kids. And I know there's also issues where you have siblings where the older sibling's not able to, I guess, take the same buses as the youngest sibling, and sort of vice versa. So again, I guess it's not an easy process to sort of wee through as we're looking at school assignment and transportation and trying to find ways to save costs, but there's got to be sort of a more predictable and practical way to kind of figure this out. So please add my name and look forward to the hearing and try to make sense of this, particularly for those that feel like they're an outpost where the schools are the furthest away from their home, but also sort of dovetailing what Counselor Wu was saying about, you know, we should have a vocational technical school that rivals the best one in the state, which is out of Worcester, and probably second best is down at Cape Cod Tech. And to have a resource like that in the city and then to recognize that we have kids from all of the neighborhoods of Boston that want to have access to that, we're going to need to really dive in and find out what's the best transportation mode to make it happen. So look forward to the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Madam Clerk, if you could add Counselor Flaherty's name. Counselor McCarthy, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And if I could please have my name added. Anytime I hear BPS transportation... Anytime I hear BPS Transportation, I never dodge the opportunity to take a shot at them. I love those hearings dearly because I get all fired up. When you talk about buses going from East Boston and to East Boston, they're coming from Reedville, which literally, if you stand in the backyard of the Reedville Bus Yard, you can throw a baseball into Dedham. It still makes no sense to me why 300-plus buses roll through Hyde Park, roll through Rozy, roll through Mattapan to get throughout the rest of the system. As a person who used to run operations, it makes absolutely no sense. I still haven't gotten a great answer from BPS on why all of the buses remain in the furthest southern tip of Boston to travel throughout. I think arguably, as a district city councillor, my biggest complaint in our office is transportation. It takes an hour and a half to get here, it takes me 20 minutes to get over the bridge, it used to take this long, it used to take that long. In my particular neighborhood, and you were talking about district, my district, the biggest concern with, you can't even jog the neighborhood without the diesel fumes that are emitted from our bus yard choking you as you run by. So I'm looking forward to a hearing because anytime I can get them in front of me to once again ask the question why, I try to take that opportunity. So I'll see you at the hearing.
Thank you, Council McCarthy. Madam Clerk, if you could add Council McCarthy's name. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Madam Clerk, if you could add Council Siomo, Council Flynn, Council Janey, Council Zachem, as well as the chair. Docket 1688 will be assigned to the Committee on Education. Moving on to personnel orders.
Docket number 1689, Council Campbell for Council Flynn.
Council Flynn seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1689. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, docket 1689 has been passed.
Docket number 1690, Council Campbell for Council McCarthy.
Council McCarthy seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1690. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, docket 1690 has been passed.
Docket number 1691, Council Campbell for Council McCarthy.
Council McCarthy seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1691. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, docket 1691 has been passed.
Docket number 1692, Council Campbell for Council O'Malley.
Council O'Malley seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1692. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, docket 1692 has been passed.
Docket number 1693, Council Campbell for Council Zachem.
Council Zachem seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1693. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, docket 1693 has been passed.
Docket number 1694, Council Campbell for Council Zachem.
Council Zachem seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1694. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, docket 1694 has been passed.
Docket number 1695, Council Campbell for Council Janey.
Council Janey seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1695. All those in favor of passage say aye. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, docket 1695 has been passed.
Docket number 1696, Council Campbell.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1696. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, docket 1696 has been passed.
Docket number 1697, Council Campbell offered.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1697. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, docket 1697 has been passed.
Docket number 1698, Council Campbell offered.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1698. All those in favor of passage say aye. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, docket 1698 has been passed.
Docket number 1699, Council Campbell offered.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1699. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, docket 1699 has been passed. Moving on to late files. I'm informed by the clerk that we have three late-file matters, which in the absence of an objection will be added to today's agenda. Hearing and seeing no objection, the late-file matters are so added. Madam Clerk, if you could read the first late-file matter into the record.
Thank you, Madam President. Council Ayanna Presley, Boston City Council at Large, November 28, 2018. Dear Madam Clerk, I regret that being to my previously scheduled new member of Congress orientation in Washington, DC, I will not be able to attend today's city council meeting. I look forward to reviewing and the recording, and will have staff present. All the best, Ayanna Presley, Boston City Council at Large.
The first late-file matter will be placed on file. Madam Clerk, if you could read the second late-file matter. And just so my colleagues are clear, the first was obviously a letter from Council Presley, the other two are personnel orders.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number, I'm sorry, November 28, 2018, Council Campbell for Council Janey.
Council Janey seeks a suspension of the rules and passage of the second late-file matter, which is a late personnel order. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the second late-file matter has been passed.
November 28, 2018, Council Campbell for Council Janey.
Council Janey seeks suspension of the rules and passage of the third late-file matter, which is a personnel order. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the third late-file matter has been passed. Anyone wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets? Great, moving right along. I am informed by the clerk that there are zero late-file matters for the consent agenda. At this time, the chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the consent agenda has been adopted. Just a friendly reminder that Council Siomo has his lunch immediately following our meeting, so everyone, please join us. Anyone else have an announcement? Council Asabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you. Madam President, I ask unanimous consent to make a statement regarding a toy drive and the police patches that are at your desk.
Go right ahead, thank you.
Thank you. First, we were in, on October 31st, we were to have the Boston Police Department, Mass Art Police Department, Suffolk Police Department, and a number of others were going to join us just to discuss and demonstrate their effort over the month of October regarding breast cancer awareness. Because of the Red Sox World Series Parade, they weren't able to attend, but I did purchase for the Boston Police, everyone, a patch that they were selling as a fundraising effort. So that is why that's on your desk. We've already reserved next October to bring them all in early in the month. Boston Police doesn't wear their patches, but Suffolk and Mass Art does to really promote the idea over the whole month of October. And the Suffolk captain that I met had sort of, everything was in pink, and it was pretty cool and really a great effort to bring awareness to breast cancer awareness. So that's my gift to you, and Council McCarthy and I are going to partner next year to get them here before there's an opportunity for a World Series Parade. The other thing you all have, and why I've got my prop with me today, is my annual toy drive to benefit the Homeful Little Wanderers over the next two weeks or so between now and December 12th, which is my birthday, the day before Counselor Edwards's birthday. I have, I'm asking for all of you to participate in this annual toy drive. We'll give some sort of prize to the office that collects the most, and I hope that you'll participate, and we have a lot of fun collecting those toys over the next couple of weeks. That is it for me, thank you.
Thank you, Council Asabi George, and thank you for the badges. Council Flaherty?
Just to make a brief statement on the USS Hudner. Both Council Flynn and I were down there today with school students from all the public schools in South Boston, and if you have a chance over the next couple of days, you really should get down there. It's a $700 million destroyer, it's the latest and greatest of our U.S. Navy fleet, pretty impressive vessel. Eddie serving, obviously, as a Navy veteran for close to 25 years, so I know it was a thrill for him to be down there, but it was also a thrill for the kids to be down there just to see this beautiful destroyer. So that said, just a little back note for those that don't know about the gentleman that the boat was, the ship is named after, Tom Hudner. He was a captain, actually at the time he was a lieutenant, Navy aviator, Navy pilot, and his wingman at the time was the very first black Navy fighter pilot, and the wingman got shot down over the border during the Korean War. And he stayed in the air and circled around, coming under enemy fire, and despite the fact that he was told to leave the post, he didn't leave the post. In fact, he landed his plane, basically crashed his own plane on the belly to try to save the ensign at the time, who was his wingman, and goes to sort of bravery and courage. And when he did it, he fully expected to be court-martialed, and in fact, he received Medal of Honor for his bravery in an attempt to try to rescue and protect his wingman. So that ship is named after him, Thomas Hudner, who was from Massachusetts, was born and raised in Fall River. And another interesting note, he passed away last year. I know Council Flynn had a chance to meet him on several occasions, and one of his last trips was to Korea to try to recover the remains of his buddy and his ensign, and it's yet to be recovered, but I know that that's still an ongoing process, but just goes to show you the character and the will of Captain Hudner at the time. So again, beautiful ship, if you get some time, it's down the Reserve Channel down in South Boston, and make a point to get down there, take your kids down there, but it's really a beautiful sight to see. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council Flaherty, for sharing. And you also see at Council Siomo's lunch that there are some incredible pies for the councillors, courtesy of our 14th councillor, Mike. So thank you. At this time, I would like all colleagues and guests to please rise as we adjourn today's meeting in memory. Oh, I apologize. Oh, sorry, Council Flynn. Are you all set, Council Flynn?
Yes.
Okay. As we adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Council Siomo, Mary Renucci, Walter Holman, and Lucy Senick. For Council Edwards, Priska Asunta de Pietro. For Council Asabi George, Wayne Cantos Sr. For Council Flaherty, John Parolin, Lupe Padilla. For Council Flaherty and Council O'Malley, Thomas Joseph McIntyre. For Council Janey, George Joy Barros, Yvonne Fouches-Powers, George Best, Corey Warne Parker, Franklin Taylor, Kenton Healy, Mark Bolan, and Thelma Arra Bowling. For Council McCarthy, Frederick Davis, Catherine Tinlin. For Council O'Malley, Stan Lee, Esau White. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. At this time, the chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. We are scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, December 5th, at noon in this chamber at Boston City Hall. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned.